Board of Selectmen for Warren, July 10th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel WCAT on Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. If you're going to speak, please go to the mic, the podium, and identify yourself. And with that, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first off, I will open up the public hearing, which is a request of National Grid for the placement of a new utility pole located on Cronin Road, 326 feet north of the center line of Southbridge Road. All right, go ahead. Yeah, please.
Hello, Daniel Cloud, National Grid. I'm not sure if you need me to read the verbiage or just explain the purpose of the pole.
Um, I don't know, should you read it? Yeah, go ahead and read it.
To the board of Selectmen, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, requests permission to move eight poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Cronin Road, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, to install one solely owned pole on Cronin Road, beginning at a point approximately 326 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Southbridge Road. Install pole 6-1 approximately 326 feet north of the center line of Southbridge Road, as shown on attached plan. So this is a new home, and we are bringing power just across the road for them to then go underground to the home.
Okay, all right.
So it's for a single-family home?
A single-family home.
Not a solar facility or battery backup, right?
They may have solar someday, but not for, not for a solar farm, no.
It's just for the house.
It's just for the house.
Solar array.
Array.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a farm.
Not a farm.
All right, any other questions?
Ask if there's any opposition.
Yeah, well, is there anybody in the public who has comments, concerns, opposition? Hearing none? Anything else, Jim?
Just close the public hearing and take it over?
Can we look at it on the maps to see where it's going to be? Because I didn't find a map here.
Sure. All right, Griffin.
Which one is it?
Just open Google Maps.
Is it this one or that one or just?
No, open a browser and just get to Google Maps.
Would you like a house reference number?
Yeah, yeah.
I show pole, uh, House 70 is across the street. Actually, 72.
72 Cronin Road?
Yeah. 70 is close to, but 72 is right there.
Once you locate it, you can share the screen so people, we can have that recorded.
If you go.
Back to the Zoom.
Back to Zoom, yeah.
The one in the middle, the green arrow.
Yeah.
Perfect, there we go.
So the plot of land runs between Southbridge Road and Cronin Road. It's a larger parcel that's building a home.
You put it on satellite image?
Where's that again?
It's at the bottom, bottom to the.
Yeah, bottom right.
You could actually draw, yeah.
You can.
That one, there we go. A little stuff covering it.
Just move the window, you can minimize that.
So right in here.
Correct.
That's what the bolt was? Zoom in.
Do you want me to show you some?
Yes.
The pole is going to be right here because we're gonna, they're gonna go underground to the house. Instead of, the driveway is very windy and long, it would cost them a whole lot. So it's on their frontage, um, but on the Cronin Road frontage as opposed to the Southbridge Road frontage.
So it goes to the pole and then underground to the house, is that?
Uh, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Okay. If there's no other questions or objections, do we have a motion?
Or we gotta close the public, yeah.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the National Grid pole hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. The public hearing is closed and then?
I'll make a motion to approve the pole for electric grid on Cronin Road, 326 feet north of the center line of Southbridge Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, continue discussion with Civic Plus regarding current billing and possible options/updates to the town's existing website. All right, who is it, Corey?
Corey, yeah.
Yep.
So Mr. Chairman, before you this evening is Corey from Civic Plus. He's going to make a brief presentation to the board as to where we currently are with Civic Plus, our current provider. As you may recall, we had Alita Crowley, who is our, our account representative in here about a month or so ago, um, kind of going over some different options. And she had mentioned during that process that Civic Plus is going to be moving to a new platform away from Drupal, which is its current platform. And they're going to be migrating to a new platform come this fall. So not only are we trying to do a new website, but we also have to navigate our current website's upgrade, which is coming from, from Civic Plus in the fall. Civic Plus has to change us off of this Drupal platform and into a new platform. And Corey's going to talk about that, talk about some options, and lay out where we are currently with this website development search.
Okay. Yes. All right, Corey. Is he not getting audio? Our audio's on.
You can't hear us?
I can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Are you muted?
Uh, thank you. Technical difficulty there, right?
Yeah.
My name is Corey Abbott. I'm going to share my screen and have a brief presentation for today. Some of the stuff that I'll talk about may be things that you've already talked about with Alita Crowley. I will then as well try to provide that new information, give you a clear options of what you have to do to move forward as well with Civic Plus. Let me know if you can, I just requested to share my screen. If y'all could approve that and I can share what I have here for you.
Yeah, you're all set.
Okay. Can you see the Town of Warren, Massachusetts here?
Yeah.
All right, wonderful. So as Jim had mentioned, my name is Corey Abbott. I am your migration manager. I'm a different, I'm an account manager with Civic Plus. And it is going to be assisting your team making this transition from your Drupal platform to our proprietary CMS platform, which we call Web Central. Alita Crowley will be your, will continue to be your account manager, and your team will continue to be supported by Victoria Gonzalez, your customer success manager, should you choose to move forward with Civic Plus. Now, I've heard, I think you've heard of this, but I wanted just to briefly recover this. Now, the Drupal platform is something that is not owned by Civic Plus. We did have some clients that were on that platform. And we heard earlier this year that the company who owns that Drupal 7 will be sunsetting that platform. So we made a decision here at Civic Plus to move our customers away from that website platform and onto our proprietary CMS, the Civic Plus Municipal Website Central. We are also working against an upcoming deadline in November of 2025. As Aquia has also announced that they will no longer be supporting certain modules on the website. So after November 2025, continuing with your current website could result in disruptions that Civic Plus will be unable to provide support for. Now, as part of this switch, something that we understand many organizations were not prepared for, Civic Plus has put together a start, a central starter package to make that transition seamless and smooth for your organization. We have waived the typical costs for content migration, bringing over all of the content that you have available on your website, verbatim, as well as all the documents, agendas, and things that you have across your website. We are also going to be waiving the cost for design work, allowing your organization to take advantage of five of our award-winning template designs. And finally, we have also waived the cost for that train, group training. There are three seats available as part of that starter package, and your organization can take as many training sessions as needed to feel comfortable managing our new system. On top of that, you will gain access to what we think is a more improved and easy-to-use solution with our Web Central platform, allowing you to drag and drop editing, providing a more consolidated view for your customers and for your staff when it comes to managing content. There'll be access to Google Analytics, and we have 12 modules that should provide improvements to your staff day-to-day duties on the website. Any questions about the new platform and the package that we have put together?
Is it going to be easier to, for operators on the site to be able to change things? Because I know right now, one of our biggest problems is adding new, um, new people to the website and giving them their privileges to change things on their, their sites. Because we have the, like, the subsites for each site where each department can control what's going on in their own site. And right now, it's just very difficult with Civic Plus because we get to add multiple sections. It'd be nice if we could just add a person and just give them the permissions instead of having to go into each page and give a permission for them.
Yes, that will be something that you'll be able to do with the new website platform. All of our solutions that we built here at Civic Plus are permission-based, and so you have the ability to set pre-permission, preset permissions as well as create new user levels. And that gives them access. We also have an approval workflow in the new platform that makes providing those edits to their department page still allowed to be filtered through, you know, main content editor or website control that provides a bit more transparency on the changes that are happening across departments.
Very good, thank you.
So is the site going to look different or is?
The site will look different, yes. Our template designs do, do look a little bit different from what the Town of Warren's current website looks like. However, we believe that we can still maintain the general customer journey that your, that your citizens and community members experience, as well as there are many template designs that can help you streamline and allow them to get where they want to go within one to two clicks.
And can we choose a template or, or you're going to kind of just pick us a basic one to do this conversion?
You have five templates to be able to choose from. On the screen here, you can see template number one and number three. So they do have different views. If you want, I can go through briefly what all of those look like, actually.
Is it in the packet here?
Should be.
It should be, yes. It's in that proposal packet in there. There is a section on that template design. You can also see on, I shared my screen here, we have one, two, three, four, and five. Choosing any one of these templates is part of that wave design fee that we've included as part of this package.
So five is basically what we're on now? Our views?
Looking similar to what you have. I, five is similar, although some of these feature very similar functionalities just placed in different areas on the template.
I have a question. Yeah, go ahead.
Question. So since you've been, you're familiar now with, with our existing page, which one would you recommend?
So based on what your current page looks like and the amount of buttons you have here on the front page, I would recommend either number two or number four. I believe those are some of the design works that mimic your current page, but also help you display your community members and citizens some of the other functions and services that you can get from the website.
Now, can we actually like, if we decide we don't like number four, if we decided we were going to go for four, could we choose a different one or we have to pay at that point?
If you go through implementation and choose at the end of it you wanted to make a change, there would likely be a one-time cost to redo that change. However, you do have time to the beginning of implementation to decide and have those internal discussions. It's not something you have to make a decision on today.
What's the timeline for doing all this?
So right now, we are averaging about 10 weeks from the moment you start your project. Typically, projects start about three weeks after contract signing. And so that is our current timeframe. That does rely on organize, your organization to be able to meet the benchmarks set, set by the timeline. Our project manager would work with your team to establish a timeline. Throughout the implementation, there will be different checkpoints for approvals in providing certain deliverables, whether that's branding and color choices, technical information about your domain, and setting up your permissions. But assuming everything goes smoothly, about 10 weeks is our average right now for implementation.
Okay. Go ahead.
Another question. What's going to happen with the old one?
So right now, we are continuing to host that website, assuming that you're going to be moving forward with us. We will keep that live until the moment you are ready for your new website. Once that is, once you transition over with Civic Plus or go with a different provider, then we would cease hosting it and the information there would no longer be accessible.
Can we get a copy of all the information?
You will have the ability to be able to download anything you have throughout that implementation process. I do not believe that is something included in our current scope to give you a copy, to provide a copy of everything that was included. Our migration of your content is restricted to the publicly available. So largely things that are located in your cabinet, as well as other areas in the backend of your website, aren't accessible from our team for that migration.
Oh, wait, say that again? So?
So we, sorry, come on.
So we, the cabinets, like the file system, right? So we put like bylaws in there and procedures and stuff like that? So that would, that would not get transferred over?
That would not be part of our responsibility on that scope of the content migration. Your team will have time, there's about three, two to three weeks at the end of implementation, where you will have access to both sites so that your team members can go in and pull any other information from the backend that you need to bring over. Additionally, if you publish any of that content during the migration process, it can be captured by the content migration setup that we have.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Corey, the backend, now, can you clarify the backend from the frontend in terms of, you know, the public see, whatever you see publicly, that will get transferred over? You guys will transfer that over, correct?
Correct, yes. Anything that is publicly accessible on your website right now will be transferred over.
And then what do you mean by the backend? What, what, what could potentially be there in the backend?
So if you have items in your file library, if you had unpublished pages, anything that the public cannot see currently with what we consider the backend or what I think Drupal refers to as the cabinet.
Bylaws are variable to the public.
They're open to the machine.
Yeah, okay, so.
Well, all the old ones out.
Yeah, but that's probably okay. I have, there's old copies.
No, because you got to make it historical.
Well, we could just, we could just download them and archive them. So if we have a, a bylaw document, like a PDF in the cabinet, and it's got a link on the planning board page, let's say, that would get moved over?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's.
Because I think you were thinking of all of the content.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, yeah. I was thinking all those links would be broken until we moved all that stuff over, like, meh. Okay.
Our team, if it's a link on your page, we'll go in, we'll download that document, and move that over to your new document library.
Okay. So is the structure of the new site similar? Or like, does it have a file cabinet or does it have a to- totally different like storage method or scheme?
It, it does have a file library in the inside. It will look likely totally different from what your current Drupal platform looks like on the backend, but it is built with, to help maintain some of that similar functionality as well as provide more ease of use for your staff when managing your content.
Okay. So have we gone over the costs and everything already?
So, um, yeah, Corey, would you be able to just go over what, what we would need to do right now? And I know, Corey, that, you know, I had you sharpen the pencil a little bit. So if you could explain everything to, to the board and, and go over the cost, that'd be great.
Yeah, so as you can see here, we do have this quote that I shared, I believe, with Jim. And we are able to maintain your current renewal for that initial term. And then there would be an increase in your annual cost for this migration process. Your new website would carry a $4,000 annual cost. Like I mentioned before, we have waived all of the implementation and one-time fees. So we're just strictly talking here about the annual subscription. Now, there was an enhancement that we brought up with Jim to consider that is featured here on our second quote. It is our AudioEye partnership, which helps your team take a hands-off approach to web accessibility. We did help provide some discount on that, bringing down the annual cost as well. So if you decided to move forward with the website and the partnership with AudioEye, which would help you maintain your web accessibility guideline or standards in compliance with recent changes to DOJ, that would be $4,680.61 for this initial year and $6,000 for your annual cost going forward. If you move forward just with the website, making the migration over to Web Central, taking advantage of the new modules, but not including any enhancements as part of that package, then it would be $3,680.61 for the initial year and $4,000 for that annual cost.
Okay, so the AudioEye is another $2,000 per year?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
And that partnership allows you, it is a partnership we have with the company AudioEye that would have automated fixes to assist with compliance with web accessibility and DOJ standards, which have new deadlines coming for, for the Town of Warren in the next few years. It really helps your team, if their team takes on the responsibility of ensuring your content on your website meets all accessibility standards. That way, your team does not have to go through the training and monitor the content you are putting out online. While we will be launching your new website in a compliant manner, the responsibility for maintaining that compliance does fall upon the Town of Warren once it is launched.
So do other vendors provide a similar feature?
Yeah, there, there are.
Okay.
There are, yeah. Do they do charge more, you know, as a cost?
It's a noun, I.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he would provide us with a website, after he extracts all our data and puts it into the new template, one that is fully compliant with ADA accessibility for the $3,600 price, okay? From the day he turns that over to us, it would be our responsibility to make sure whatever content that is added to the website meets the ADA standards and thresholds.
Okay.
AudioEye automatically does that for us.
It does it or just sends us an email that it raises flags?
They, they, they hand, they, they, they ensure that we're compliant with ADA accessibility with whatever we put up there.
Okay.
Is that correct, Corey?
That is correct, yes. AudioEye would change, many of the kind, issues we see with websites are things like alternate text, the way that your content is read by screen readers, as well as color contrast. They are able to go through and automatically fix things due to making changes to the code of the website so that it is displayed in a compliant manner. And then they would handle that for you so that it's a truly hands-off approach for what accessibility when you partner with AudioEye.
Question. Yeah.
I have a question. So let's say if you do the migration, is our website going to be in compliance or not?
If we do the migration, the website will be launched in a compliant manner, but we will not be responsible for maintaining that compliance going forward for the content that you update. We at Civic Plus are responsible and are working to ensure that our system and the coding of our system is compliant. But a lot of the issues with online accessibility come from the content that is displayed. And ensuring that it is done in a compliant manner would fall off the Town of Warren.
Just to follow up, so if I upload a PDF of some, of any kind, AIA is going to say, is going to change the PDF and, and fix it, make it compliant?
They would be responsible for your, the website itself. Uploading the PDF would be something you'd have to accomplish in the system that you are doing that. So I'm sorry about that confusion there.
Okay.
Documents would still be your responsibility, and they are unable to change those documents for you. They would let you know if they are up, if they are not, not compliant, but they wouldn't be able to make the automated fix for those.
So the day we get the website, if we don't mess with it at all, the only thing we do is add maybe a link to a PDF that we upload, we wouldn't fall out of compliance, right? It's more.
That is correct. With the, with the current ADA standards, it would not fall out of compliance.
Okay.
If the DOJ changed those ADA standards a year or two down the line, that would be different. But when it launches, it will be compliant in the current ADA standards.
Okay. And so the problem would be, like, if we add a new section to the website for like a new department or I don't, you know, whatever, that would then be on us to make sure that it's compliant? Because we're adding that, that new UI screen.
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, potentially.
Didn't we get a grant for ADA accessibility?
Yeah, for the study, for, to do the study. We don't have a grant to do any implementation.
Okay. I'm sure there's something out there though.
Oh, yeah, we will, we'll have actual grants that would.
So potentially this could pay for itself through a grant.
Corey, can, can we start without the AIA thing and then add it like a year or two down the road or is? Okay.
Yes, it can be added at any time.
Okay. I mean, I would say we skip it. Because again, if we don't modify the site, we're just uploading stuff, we create a link. We should be okay.
I just wanted to have you guys hear the options.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's fine. But I think initially, we can save two grand a year.
Again, if we can. Again, if we can get a grant to pay for it, then they can implement it, and it's not costing us anything.
Yeah, but this is a recurring fee too, though, so I don't know if the grant would do that. It might do the first year, right?
Essentially.
Yeah.
We can't move right now, so.
Yeah.
We gotta stick with Civic right now, because it's too late in the game to switch to a different company.
Right, I think. So what is the hard deadline on this, Corey? What, when is Drupal done, V, V seven, or whatever it is?
So the, the, the hosting of the, of Drupal platforms, I believe, will continue for a short while, but they have announced the stop of support of modules, specific modules, and more expected to come this November. So after November, an area in your website where it happened to break on one of those unsupported modules, there is nothing that we or Civic Plus or off we would be able to do to remedy that situation. You might suffer from disruptions caused by that. So we are working to try to migrate all of our customers off Drupal seven ahead of that November 25th deadline. If you choose to move to a different provider and not go with Civic Plus, it would have a hard deadline of April 2020, April 30th, 2026, as the end of your current renewal contract, and we would not be able to continue past that.
How much do we pay now?
So right now, we're paying $3,600. That, that's what's owed right now, $3,680.61.
A month or per year?
Per year.
Oh, okay, yeah, so they're basically honoring that for one year, and then it's gonna bump up. Okay.
So.
And then in year three, it goes up $200 after that, so.
Yeah, so.
Oh, five percent.
Yeah. So what, um, what, what, what is before you this evening is, is, you know, we're gonna have to pay Civic Plus the $3,680.61 to continue, that's our renewal subscription for the, for the year. In that time period, what Civic Plus is going to do for us is take us off of our current platform, put us into a new platform.
Yeah.
Give us a revamped site that looks different. We can, we can get some training as incorporated with this, with staff. We'll test it out for, for the year, see how it is, and we still have the money reserved for a new site if we wanna go to a different vendor in the future. But at least it gives us like, almost like a, a free test drive.
Yeah, it does, yeah, that's exactly what it is, right? And we can really test it as opposed to getting a demo that we look at for two hours one evening or something. Okay.
I say we just go with it, because we gotta go with it anyways. You know, it's, we're just dragging it down the road now. You know, it's too late in the game to switch to a new website.
Yeah, and it gives us enough time.
Yeah, it gives plenty of time. We switch over to a new format, might, we might even like this format.
Yeah.
It might be easier to use.
Yeah.
We'll try it, and if it doesn't work out, we have it already formatted, everything's saved over on the website, and if we decide to move over to another one later on, we can do that.
So Corey, have you worked with, um, so you know what level our site is at? Have you worked with sites similar to ours? We, so we have a lot of difficulty with, with the current site, so do you have an experience with what our site is like?
Um, I personally have not worked with many customers on the Drupal. However, the few customers I have worked with through this process, we have heard very many positive things, and the customers that are launching as part of this migration have been happy with that, with that process. I can also speak that their WebCentral solution is our largest customer base here at Civic Plus. There are other, there are over 4,000 other customers utilizing the new platform that you will transition over to, and through our support team, account management, client success managers, we're able to maintain a 95% customer satisfaction rating from year to year. So I would say that speaks to the positive response and the ease of use that we're gonna be bringing with this new platform.
Okay. Let's do it. All right, so. All right, so, I don't know, are there any other questions? Is there a motion? What do you wanna do? I, I, personally, I think we should go with it, just for the reasons Jim said, right?
It's certainly better, I guess.
Yeah, well, because we, and we got a nice, long test drive.
Because right now, we are not taking any decision on changing company, another price, or.
Yeah.
They, they just have to do this anyway.
Right, and actually, the sooner it gets done, the better, because then we can start playing with it and see if it's really worth it. Okay. All right, let's just, is there a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to pay the current bill with Civic Plus and maintain for the next year with Civic Plus.
Is that good, or?
Yeah, and to authorize the town administrator to sign the quote.
Said move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. Approved. All right, thanks, Corey.
Corey, I'll be in touch with you tomorrow.
All righty then. Number three.
One, one second. If you don't, guys don't mind, you can include me in whatever it is.
Oh, yeah, oh, for the future, for implementation, absolutely.
To, to the implementation, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, I'm just sending them over the documents, but I'll.
I'm not a big expert, but I've done many websites.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would like to see the five templates.
Okay.
If it's more than just a picture, too.
We gotta see it on the phone, too.
A couple extra, yeah, a couple extra pages.
Maybe they have already clients using those templates, and then we can check them out.
Yeah, we could go to their site.
Okay, I'll get the, I'll get that for you.
All right.
Yeah, an example of each one of them.
Mm-hmm.
Client. We'll do that.
All right. Discussion with possible vote to open a gift account for veterans. So, um, so apparently, Michelle has received some money from a local biker's group? And so she needs an account to deposit the money?
Yeah, that second email that came in today.
Okay.
Um, and it's just talking, because she was gonna be here originally, but the second one just details what it would be for and what exactly it would be used for.
Okay, so it basically would go back to the veterans to help them, so food, toiletries, household necessities, fuel payments, I mean, basically whatever she thinks is worthy.
So, so you would, if you, if you guys decide to open up the account, you would specify what it would be used for right here, if you're, if you're agreeable to those? All four of those items?
Okay.
So we're gonna stay safe for.
But maybe not limit it to that, right? Or huh?
To buy gift cards, food, toiletries, and household like necessities?
So it would be hometown banner program, uh.
Okay, the four.
The four.
Okay.
And is there some sort of quote-unquote audit process? In other words, would we get a list of what was given out, or?
So we would go through the same process for, for acquisition in terms of expenditures. So, you know, they would, you know, these, these would be the approved expenditures that if you guys approve them, that, that would be on file with the, with the accountant's office, and those would, would fall within this category as an approved expenditure out of the gift to fund account.
Okay, so, yeah, all right. So there would be some sort of just legerds saying, you know, went to this person for this item, this amount? Okay, so we could look at that.
Okay, so I'm gonna have to add all this stuff into the.
Yeah, is that right, in the motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And, and, yeah, okay. Are we strictly limiting it to this, or can we make it?
I mean, if you wanna, I mean, you can make it un, you know, unrestricted, if that's what you wanna do. This is what she's looking for, I guess you could make it unrestricted and, and, and make it a little bit more flexible.
Well, how about, okay, how about we do these, and then if she has other ideas to come to us? Can we do that?
Then she, yeah, then she would come back anytime.
So if it's a for use not on here, like, I don't, like, I don't know, buying a car, something like that, then she would have to come to us and say, look, here's the need, this guy needs a car.
Veterans' age in Camaro.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, soft.
Of course.
Yeah, that would, you wanna do a motion like that, then? So it gives her some flexibility, then.
Derek, good?
Yeah, are you? Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the gift account for the veterans' agent to include the hometown banner program for veterans and families. The veterans who not, who do not qualify for Chapter 115 benefits, and the funds would be used to buy gift cards, food, toiletries, and household necessities. Funds can be used to disperse to veterans to help with extra fuel payments that do not qualify for fuel assistance, and funds can be used to assist with out-of-pocket housing and medical costs for veterans who do not qualify for other veterans' assistance.
All right, you wanna say any other use would be review, or needs to be approved by select, or you wanna, you're done? Okay, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. Motion carries.
Yeah, the reason why is if she gets something specific, she can come back and ask for it.
She can, yeah.
Versus us saying any other things, because then that's interpreted to.
Yeah.
Well, you said I could do any other things.
Yeah. All right, Fire Chief's monthly report for May and June 2025.
Good evening, everyone, I'm the boy, Fire Chief. Thank you for having me this evening. I have May and June to present. A little bit late on May, only because we had quite a busy June month with regard to town meeting and the safety complex meetings and stuff, so didn't quite as many selectmen's meeting as normal. In the month of May, the fire department responded to 52 fire calls. It included four, seven motor vehicle accidents, four medical assists, four activated alarms, 11 calls that were canceled for various different reasons, five service or assist calls, three power line incidents, seven investigations, one structure fire, two extracations, two illegal burns, two vehicle fires, two gas emergencies, one electrical equipment issue, and one hazardous material call. In terms of EMS, we did 66 calls in May of 2025, and 16 ALS intercepts were required for those calls. We did nine smoke and CO inspections, one oil burning equipment inspection, two liquid propane inspections. In terms of training and activities, we trained on our new forcible entry prop, which was, came off of monies from an earmark from the Quay Bog program, which was very beneficial to us, so this is, there's only a handful of departments that have props like this that are in our area, they're very hard to get, they're very heavy and, and everything, so we were able to get this through an earmark through Jake Olivera's office. So this was awesome, it's now been implemented, and, and not only we can use it, but other fire departments can come and use it and everything, and it allows us to practice breaching doors and things like that, inward swinging doors, outward swinging doors, and allow us to practice techniques to get in and out of buildings, and we need to be able to do that, so that was really great. More in EMS, personnel began their CPR recertifications, we have people all over the, all over the calendar in terms of when their certifications expire, it depends on what month they get it in, so as they start to expire, we, we have, have them come in and do their CPR certifications. We started that. In terms of the budget, just continuing to monitor the FY25 budget very closely, it's pretty much closed out at this point. I, it's been a good year, and, and, and things have gone well for us, I, I think all of our line items are sufficient, haven't had to approach finance or, or the board for any transfers or anything like that, so we're looking pretty good. Any questions on May? Continue to June. We did 50 calls, fire calls in June, included nine motor vehicle accidents, 13 medical assists, seven activated alarms, three investigations, six calls that were canceled, three service calls, two vehicle fires, one good intent call, four power line incidents, one carbon monoxide incident, and one illegal burn. We responded to 75 EMS calls in June, and 13 ALS intercepts were required for those calls. We did four smoke and CO inspections, two liquid propane inspections. The fire department personnel trained on relay pumping and drafting evolutions, which is anytime we're outside of hydrant district and we don't have hydrants to work with, we set up bag operations, or we draft directly out of, you know, bodies of water, so that's always a good thing to practice on, because in these rural communities, you're doing a lot of that, so we had a entire evolution based on that. And we also continued some more CPR recertifications for the EMS members. We have two personnel that are, did our CPR certified instructors on our department, so they, we are able to do that in-house now, which is really nice. In terms of the payroll and budgets and personnel, again, I think everything looks, looks really good, which I'm, I'm proud to report, that, you know, there are no overages and everything, so it's been a busy couple of months, but doing really well, couple of updates, we, we do have the new tanker truck arriving in the next couple of weeks, that's been something we've been working on for four years now, almost, so where our last allotment came through, so that's, uh, was built in Canada, it's now in New Hampshire, at the Kenworth dealer getting its final, you know, prep work done, and, and some wiring and stuff like that, but that should be here and, you know, in service within this next month, once we get done with all the training on it, so that's really great. Working on a bunch of different grants that are coming through and have come through. Our hose and appliance replacement project is almost done, we're gonna be turning back quite a bit of money to the town on that one, once those last few bills come in, so we're, we're in good shape. We've been very fortunate with grants, very fortunate with, with equipment and, and other things coming in from a lot of different, you know, different agencies, different, different FEMA, the state, and certainly earmarks from our local legislators, so can't complain, but doing pretty good. Any questions?
All right, any questions?
Good news, chief, very good, thank you. Good job.
Chief.
As usual.
Amazing job. Thank you very much for all you do for the town.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you and everything you and your team do for us.
Well, we appreciate the support from the board and from town administrator, and welcome, Griffin, we look, look forward to welcoming you. Well, we've seen each other a lot, I'm sure, but thank you to all, all of you guys for the continued support.
All right. Chief Muller?
Good evening, everyone. I have May and June as well. For May, May, we logged 1,160 calls, investigated three felonies, had 66 incident reports, 10 on-view arrests, three warrant arrests, 17 summons arrests, a total of 30 ARs, zero protective custody's, zero juvenile arrests, 177 motor vehicle stops, 106 citations, and nine motor vehicle accidents. On the first and the month, I met with Andrew Koloski from PAX Healing. Mr. Koloski gave me an information on this new program based out of Rochdale. PAX Healing is a mental health and addiction treatment service, and will give us another option that we can offer people. On May 6th, we took part in the town voting, officers assisted with safety at the polls. On the 13th, I, along with the fire department, met with the owners of Laurel Ridge to go over the plan for their upcoming concert season. On the 14th, I attended my monthly Central Mass Chiefs meeting, and on the 15th, I attended the school sa- school safety seminar planning, the school summer safety planning training. That's easy to say. That was offered free by the Homeland Security. On the 20th, I attended a meeting at the school in regards to Red Dot and grants that we were looking to apply for, a glance that we are looking to move forward on, our school resource officer, school safety improvements, and a tech grant for the PD. Also, on the 20th, I attended my monthly Homeland Security meeting. Then on the 21st, all department heads attended a meeting put on by our town administrator. Also this day, I attended a date affair at the elementary school with Superintendent Duff. The students did a fantastic job on their booths. On the 23rd, I spent a few hours at Quay Bog for Step Up Day. This is when the sixth graders come to Quay Bog, the high school, the toy school, and see what they are experiencing next year. On the 24th, the department participated in the Memorial Day Parade, the day was perfect, and there was a great turnout. And finally, at the end of the month, the entire department participated in the second round of mandatory firearms qualifications for training year FY25. Move on?
Sure. Any questions? Any questions?
Any questions? So for the month of June, a little typo on the top there, it should be 1,074 calls, nine, investigating nine felonies, 70 incident reports, 40 on view, four on-view arrests, four warrant arrests, 20 summons arrests, for a total of 28 ARs, zero PC, zero juvenile arrests, 101 motor vehicle stops, 65 citations, and 10 motor vehicle accidents. And for the month of June, on the third month, I attended my Homeland Security meeting on the Senate, I had the honor of being invited to attend the Quay Bog Class of 2025 graduation ceremony. Congratulations to all the graduating seniors, and good luck in the future. On the 10th, I attended my quarterly domestic violence task force meeting with the chief from Ware and Harwick. This meeting, we met our new DB police advocate, Melissa Hutchins, who just started with BHN. Also, on the 10th, the levy committee met to discuss the, the report from the Army Corps of Engineers, we also discussed projects for the levy that we wanna see move forward. We also discussed projects for the levy that we want to see move forward. On the eleventh, I attended the Central Mass Chiefs Police Meeting. Also on the eleventh, department members, Don Guzzik, Officer Rodby, and Officer Gillespie attended the celebration of life for Mr. Don McCauskey. On the twelfth, I submitted a road grant for the Governor's Highway Safety Bureau. This grant will supply overtime for traffic shift, as well as we're asking for two more of those electronic speed signs that we have. Also, on the twelfth, was the town's annual town meeting, which thanked all that attended and made this a successful meeting. On the eighteenth, I went to both schools and greeted all the students for their last day. I wished them a happy and safe summer vacation. On the twenty-first, department members attended the town's fireworks display. The Parks Department again put on a great event. And on the twenty-sixth, Sergeant Williams, Officer Gillespie attended a check presentation at the Quaybog Regional by DA Joseph Early. The DA presented a check to the school to fund an after-prom program, after-prom event. On the twenty-seventh, Officer Cody attended the Parks and Recreation Touch Truck Event. This event was a tremendous event, and I would like to also thank Sergeant Williams for reaching out to the state police, and they came down in one of their vehicles. On the twenty-eighth, vigil was held for Molly Bish at the Town Common, marking twenty-five years that Molly has been missing from Cummins Pond. My thoughts and prayers go out to the entire Bish family. And finally, throughout the month of June, all members in the department went through the annual review process.
All right. Any questions?
Awesome, Jim. Very good, very good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Your vehicle, one of them, D seven eighty-five, are you looking at cycling that one out soon?
Yes, so at the annual town meeting, we got half of the funding for that. And then at the next meeting, we'll look to, that one, we're going to look to replace because it's a problem. That's, that was the first generation hybrid they came out with.
Oh, yeah.
So that one's been in the shop a lot in its lifetime, so it really should be way over that mileage, but due to the fact that we went weeks without it, that's why it's at ninety-two, so we always wait for that threshold of a hundred thousand before we come and ask for the cruiser, so.
That's what we get a grant for.
Yeah.
Bought it with a grant and it.
Green Communities gave us, I think, six thousand for it, for the hybrid. But they worked on a technology. That one, it was out for weeks and ended up fighting battle between the upfitter and of course, Lamro Ford was saying it was the upfitter's fault, upfitters saying there's no problems with our wiring. It ended up being Ford's problem and it was nothing that anyone ever expected. It was the transmission. It would just, it would just shut off and tell you to turn over, not pull over, and you have to wait there twenty, thirty minutes before it reset and then it'd start back up and go.
It's great in an emergency, huh?
Yeah, so with the hybrid system, there's three computers inside the transmission and they were malfunctioning. So we, we didn't have it for probably well over a few months that, at that period. And that was towards the beginning of its, I think it was at thirty, had thirty thousand miles on it back then, when it was having those problems. But now it's starting, it light just came on where it says charging system malfunctioning, so it's, it's getting there that needs to be replaced.
Now, the other thing, I got a follow-up question for both chiefs. Is he going to let you play with his new breaching tool?
He never does.
I already had a discussion with.
He's afraid I'm going to hurt myself.
Lieutenant and they all said that they would love to come down.
Great job, chief.
Sometimes he lets me take the pickup truck when I have to get the stuff in the bed. He's nice like that.
No way.
Yeah, yeah. People wave to me. Well, they take your hand. I'm going to grow, go teeth.
Awesome job, chief, and thank you very much for what you guys are doing too. When do we get a ride in the new fire truck? That's what I'm.
Well, when that comes in, I'll bring it up, we'll bring it up for our selectmen's meeting, so everyone.
Cool. Excellent.
Coming up next.
All right, since we're on reports, we'll do the town administrator report next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So before you this evening is my June report that I'd like to file with the board. I'd like to start with the finances of the, of the town. Fiscal year twenty twenty-six, real estate and personal property bills were mailed out on time for the July first date. So I'd like to thank all the financial team and the departments for all their hard work and tax collector getting that, those bills out on time and, and they're out there. Ninety-six percent of fiscal year twenty twenty-five real estate taxes have been collected so far. Ninety-nine point nine percent fiscal year twenty twenty-five personal property taxes have been collected so far. The total tax collections for the month of June were one hundred seventy-six thousand three hundred eighty dollars and five cents. Of that, there was eighty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents for real estate, seven hundred eighty-six dollars ninety-one cents for personal property, fifty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents for motor vehicle excise tax, nineteen thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars and six cents for interest and fees, four thousand one hundred fifty dollars and thirty cents for sewer liens, three thousand twenty dollars for registry clears, one thousand four hundred sixteen dollars for mobile home parks, two hundred seventy-five dollars for MLC fees, one thousand seven hundred nine dollars and thirty-three cents rollback taxes, and four hundred thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents in, in advertising fees that was collected. So overall, June has been a very busy month. We obviously had town meeting, we had the continued presentation with Tecton. At the end of the month, we had high school graduation. We had wrapping up some of the projects. The Green Communities Project was wrapped up at the senior center with the heat pumps and the weatherization permits being closed out. I also attended a Rotary Dinner in Westbrook Field for the rotaries of, of the Brookfields, which also includes Warren, the town of Warren, in marking their anniversary that they just had. King, Singer Kittredge came through on the side sink tables. Those are now installed at the, at the senior center kitchen, as well as some stainless steel shelving that was provided to us at no cost for above the sink. After talking with Singer Kittredge, they, they wanted to make it right for us, so they installed some additional stainless steel shelving above our sink that will help our, our kitchen staff down at the senior center. I also attended a small town administrators conference in Boylston this month, as well as the board had finalized the MOA agreement with the Warren Patrolman's Association, which goes into effect July first, has, has been in effect now. I know our finance departments, as well as the chief, has been meeting with the accountant to ensure a smooth transition into this new agreement, because this new agreement has different enhancements that were not in the old agreement that need to be accounted for in terms of payroll purposes and processing payroll. So I, I am still waiting to hear back from the association with their final review of the contract. That could take another month or two, and then hopefully we will have the contract fully ratified in front of the board for a meeting very soon. And that is the recap that I'd like to provide the board for the month of June.
All right, any questions? No, sir. Very good job. All right, thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
All right, continued discussion regarding the execution of the eviction process for Thirty-Eight Elm Street and next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We've been working with our tax title attorney, Coppola and Coppola. And David Coppola had emailed us earlier this month indicating that he has secured the final judgment for the eviction process, and now we have to execute that, that judgment. And he's laid out this next steps in this email on July second that was sent to us in terms of what the next steps are in the process. And so we have to get the, the judgment, the execution of possession and judgment has to be served to, by a sheriff to, to Thirty-Eight Elm Street and its occupants, or potential occupants. And then the town would have to secure a, a certified moving company to get any potential contents, if they are not taken, whatever contents are there. And, and, and the moving company would have to take those contents, store them in a warehouse, and notify the owners of, you know, of the, of their personal property. The town would have to upfront the costs for that. We would then recoup those costs once the house is listed by a real estate agent and sold. And so hoping that the, the costs will be recovered during the, the sale of the property. I wanted to give the board the update. I know the last time we talked, the board had authorized us to move forward with the eviction. Now I'm seeking authorization to move forward with the serving of the execution of the possession and money judgment by, by a sheriff, and then as well as securing a certified moving company to go to the property and then to board and secure the property, as well as change the locks of the property as well. So we have money, about four thousand dollars, to board and secure tax title properties. We do not have money or funds to hire a moving company. However, after really thinking about this, and, you know, I, I thought maybe we, we would need a reserve account transfer, but, you know, since this is considered a legal action, we could take legal funds, town, legal expense funds to pay for this, not having to go to the FinCom to ask for a reserve account transfer. So however, if, you know, depending on what the cost is, we may have to put an article on in the, in the fall to address if we took fifteen thousand or twenty thousand, whatever it would cost to, to do the move, you know, out of legal, then we would have to put it back.
Well, with the sale of the house, this should be able to replenish that, though.
It should be able to replenish it, but the sale probably won't, won't be captured for quite some time. There's a new process for disposing of these properties. We have to get a, a real estate agent. It has to be listed for a period of time. There's a, there's, there's a whole bunch of new steps as opposed to us just doing it as an auction. The, the state changed the law. And so this is going to require us a little bit more work, but I think we need to, to move as quickly as, as possible to get all these steps in here, because we are, there is time components to this as well, that we have to act in certain periods of time in order to have the judgment that was just given to us be enforced.
Okay. All right, any questions or?
Nope, I'm good with it. We, we went this far, we have to go all the way through.
Yeah.
You know, we're not getting any money anyways, so the only way we could do is, is enforce the order and ensure that, you know, we can get some good residents in there and.
Yeah, it's been a problem property for a while, so.
They haven't paid taxes the entire time they've lived in town, so. That's a problem.
I am good with the motion. I'm just wondering how many houses like that we have.
Hopefully not many more.
Yeah.
But there are more.
Yeah, like I said, I'm okay with the motion.
All right, so what is the motion?
So the motion would be to, to authorize this, the execution of the possession and money judgment, as well as to authorize the town administrator to enter into a, an agreement with a moving, moving company to move the possessions out of there and to board and secure the property.
And storage.
Storage.
Said, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, discussion with a possible vote to reappoint Mr. Richard Aihawker as the Board of Selectmen alternate representative to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Well.
I'm a big no on that one.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'll second that.
I'm good too.
All right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Richard Aihawker as the Board of Selectmen alternate representative to the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission.
Second that.
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes.
I abstain. Okay. Discussion with a possible vote to change the custodian for petty cash to Mr. Griffin Harrington.
This is just a technical thing.
Yeah, looks like it, huh?
Because you've got to take it off of Karen.
Yeah.
You know, put it on to Griffin.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to change the custodian for petty cash to Mr. Griffin Harrington.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye. Carries.
Look at that, more responsibility.
Discussion and possible vote on any final fiscal year twenty-five line item transfer requests.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have four, I believe, line item transfer requests in front of you. Just as a matter of clarification, the FinCom was scheduled to meet today. They had a forum issue, and they are scheduled to meet on these on Monday at four. So before you this evening is one from the Highway Department for fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, and this is for overtime that was worked, and this is for emergency call-ins. The other one is from the Sewer Department, and that is a request for thirty thousand dollars to be transferred from wages to purchase service line, and that's for the design services for the scum pump. The project will cost more than anticipated. The Sewer Commissioners met on July eighth. They have supported this transfer, and their documentation is incorporated into your packets. The Board of Health is looking for twenty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents to be transferred from landfill supplies to rabies, Board of Health Rabies Control, unforeseen submittal of rabies that needed to be tested. We are looking for, the Board of Selectmen is looking for thirty-two hundred dollars to be taken from legal expenses to the shepherd purchase services. We are waiting on a Warren Water Bill that we still haven't received yet. We don't know what the bill is going to be. We are waiting on C two Adams Energy for June's bill. We don't have a, an amount yet. And the Verizon fax and Verizon bill just came in, and we need to pay these bills. The utility costs were higher than anticipated, so we're looking to take care of that through the transfer. We have quite a bit of surplus in legal this year. We need to move that over.
Okay, so each of these are separate motion?
Correct.
Okay. So why don't we have just, is there any general questions or discussion on any of these?
No. No, sir.
Okay, so then I need four motions. He said.
Make a motion to approve the Highway Department's request for transfer for fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye. Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve the Sewer Department's request for line item transfer of thirty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye.
I make a motion to approve the Board of Health's request for line, line item transfer for twenty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye.
And I make a motion to approve the line item transfer for the Board of Selectmen for the amount of thirty-two hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Aihawker, aye. All those pass.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion and possible vote to encumber funds for bills not yet received but owed in fiscal year twenty-five and to review articles that need to be left, articles that need to be left open. Is that worded correctly?
Yep. So first one, if you want to look over the article, keeping the articles left open, the articles that are under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen, the update or purchase of lease of, of, of new computers. We have a small little balance left in there. That project is completed. We can turn that back over to the General Fund. The website upgrades for town website, we can leave that open for, you know, potential for next year. Staff training, I'd, I'd like to leave that open as well for, for next year as we are anticipating some additional trainings that are going to be put on. The wage classification study, we, we received a grant for a majority of that. That project is closed out. We can turn back that five thousand dollars for the, for the wage classification study. Maintenance of town-owned buildings. There's a small amount there. We used up most of the money to maintain the buildings. We can turn that back because we've got a new allocation of funds as of July first and we don't have any bills outstanding. And the Veterans Honor Roll Supplies, I would, I would leave that open. That, it was under the, the Veterans, Veterans Council, I believe, at one point. But since the Veterans Council has been disbanded and there's no members, I, I would leave that open. There's been a push by the Warren Rural Improvement Group to take on the restoration of the honor roll. And Warren Rural Improvement Group, I don't know if he's a, he's a member, John Dyjack, came to see me a few weeks ago and asked for some assistance in getting some quotes. I got him a quote, or I got the group a quote to, to do the restoration work. They have approved that quote. But, you know, with this money that's out there, I don't know if the board would have a problem using some of these funds, or if, if not all of them, to, to, to take care of the, you know, the upgrade to the honor roll thing. So what they would do is they would put a whole new Plexiglas, redo the, the, the lip, the, the lip around it and redo all the names.
Didn't we just have somebody work on that though?
So what they did, what, what, painted it, they painted it and they planted some flowers in front.
Oh, I thought they did more restoration.
No, so the names never got restored, which is the, the crux of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And the Plexiglas is so faded that it needs, it needs to be new.
Okay.
So there is a company that would be willing to do this. One of the biggest things about this project is the names. And we don't, I, I, not that I found here yet and I've asked the Veterans Agent and the Veterans Agent's going to check with a few places that she knows of, as well as the local Historical Commission, to know if there's that master list somewhere. Doesn't appear that one has come up yet. So we don't know if that list that is currently on there is complete. Probably not.
Yeah.
And so what is going to be done there to make the names stay more long-term is something where you can't really add to it because it's going to be like a, like a raised lettering type of thing. So he's, the, the gentleman who's looking to design this is, 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 is looking to design it in sections because there's seventeen rows of names there. And, and it comes from all different conflicts and wars that the, that the country's been in. And so there's going to be a, a portion there that hopefully that the last section where you would only have to replace that last section if you wanted to add names. Because I envision the moment that, that, that this honor roll plaque is completed, somebody's going to say, hey, you know, my, my son or my daughter or my relative is not on there. And, and I would feel terrible for, for just spending all this money and not having it on there. So what we're going to do is we're going to make that provision of that last plaque so something could be added in the future. It would be an additional cost. However, you wouldn't have to replace the whole entire thing. And then also what we would probably look to do is get he, the, the, the person who's going to do the restoration of the names is going to give us a, a, an Excel spreadsheet of the names. We'll put the names on our website. Maybe we can get them posted in the newspaper. I don't know. Maybe we can. If we can, then we would say, hey, look, if you know of anybody else that should be on this list, let us know by, you know, two weeks from now, a month from now, so that the names can be added. So it lets the public know that, you know, we're trying to do some outreach to make sure that we have a complete list.
Okay.
You can add to the website too.
Add a website, yep.
I don't know what you think. I'm, I'm in favor of that.
I'm good with every.
Yeah. The, the only thing I'm questioning is maintenance of town buildings. So when you say turn back, that just goes into free cash?
Correct.
As opposed to keeping it in the fund?
Correct.
I mean, it's almost two thousand dollars.
Right.
Why wouldn't we just keep it in there? Because there's always things to do here.
I just don't have any bills for, for twenty twenty-five.
So it's, we can't use it because we're going into twenty twenty-six money now?
Yeah, but you don't have any bills for the, the Veterans thing either though, right?
Oh, right, right. I'm, I'm sorry. I, I misunderstood your question. So, yeah, if you wanted to, I mean, you could keep it open, yes.
We can roll it over and use twenty twenty-five money?
Yeah, that's what it is, rolling it over.
Rolling it over, I'm sorry.
I, I think it's a good idea. I mean, stuff like, you know, once.
I mean, thi- this is an old list. I don't think that there's nineteen hundred dollars there. I think, I think there may be a few hundred dollars there.
Oh, okay.
This was printed, you know, earlier in June, so.
Okay.
So why would we make a motion on this if this is not correct anymore?
Well, no.
We don't even know if this money's still where it is.
No, the mon- the money is still there. It's just the amount may be different. Like, that, that one's probably the one that, that changed the most. These other ones haven't changed. The, the, the website hasn't changed, the staff training hasn't changed, and the Veterans Honor Roll hasn't changed because there's been no expenditures out of there.
Okay.
The wage classification, I know that's closed, that hasn't changed.
Yeah, something like that makes sense to turn over because it was a project that's done and we have money left over. But I would, I would say, you know, even if there's two hundred dollars in maintenance of town buildings, let's just roll it over.
So we're, we're keeping open the website, the staff training, and the building maintenance then?
Mm-hmm.
And the honor roll. And the honor roll. So we're keeping them all open? And we're not rolling anything over?
No, the, the wage study is gone and the purchase and lease of new computers we can turn over.
And we got all the computers, right?
Yeah.
There's nothing, okay.
And that's it?
That's it.
Okay, so those, those would close.
Um, well, hang on. The COA roof repair can get turned over too.
COA roof repair, where's that?
So the twenty-five thousand dollars we got in here, Mark, so we can turn that back over to cash.
Yeah, but where, where is it on here?
It's right above the Veterans.
Oh, I see. Okay, so we're going to close that out. Oh, is that town allocated money that we?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. And there's nothing else that we could do? Does it have to go to a roof repair?
Yes, yes, yeah. Because that was an article.
It's just going in, back into General Fund.
So go back to free cash.
Reallocate somewhere else if we need to.
Or can it go into like a future roof repair? I mean, is it, so is it?
For the senior center.
For the, right, it is tagged for senior center roof repair.
Yeah.
So is it worth just sticking it in that bucket for like ten years from now or something?
Why wouldn't we just go for it ten years from now?
Okay. Well, I mean, we got it sitting there, right? I mean, it's already been approved.
I think that's whoever precedes us.
Yeah.
Decision.
Okay, all right.
So. All right, we good?
I'm good.
Okay, I'll make a motion to turn over the following accounts. The updated purchase of new computers and wage classification study and the senior center roof repair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to leave open the following accounts. The town website upgrades, the staff training, the maintenance of town buildings and Veterans Honor Roll Supplies.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So is that it on that? Okay, cool. All right. Number twelve, review of a requested vote to add desk drawers and.
Oh, no, the, the, the.
That would be the encumbrance too.
Oh, sorry.
You said that was it.
Yeah, for, for, for the other ones, yeah.
For ten. Discussion and possible vote to encumber funds for bills not yet received but owed in fiscal year twenty twenty-five and to review articles that need to be left open. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So these are the bills that we're anticipating getting that we have not.
I thought we were entirely done with that.
That we're, that we're not, that we have not received yet.
Okay.
Some of them, and that we have to encumber some of the funds.
And this is just Select Board stuff, right?
Select Board stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with.
So you get it? Derek?
I'm good.
So I'll make a motion to encumber the following items. Power products for two thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy cents. Power products for five hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-four cents. Power products for two thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Power products for five hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents. C two MA Adams for fifteen hundred dollars. C two MA Adams for one thousand dollars and Warren Water for one thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye. Motion carries. All right. Now, review of requested quote to add desk drawers and a glass top to the Selectmen's meeting room desk. All right.
What's this about?
So prior to Karen leaving, I believe she was asked to get quotes for drawers and a desktop for this, this new desk setup. And so Mass Corps, Mass Corps provided us with that quote. The quote is one thousand six hundred three dollars and sixty-seven cents to do the drawers and to do a glass top.
So.
This is, I, I will let the board know this was not budgeted for, so.
So subsequent to this too, Karen looked, once she got the quote about a glass top. So the problem is, there's already been like stains and stuff from people putting wet beverage things on the desk.
Coasters.
Yeah.
Three dollars.
Well.
Coasters.
Karen looked up, on Amazon you can buy like, what, what, what did she, did you see what she found? Oh, okay. I mean, it was literally like for thirty dollars or something, you can buy some stuff that's a desk protector. And so we could run it all the way along here and just protect the whole thing.
Is it like a cheap plastic thing that?
It's, it's thirty dollars, so is it cheap? Yeah, but it's not, it's not glass, which is, you know.
I guess the hard part.
Five hundred plus dollars.
The hard part will be the shape.
Yeah.
Well, this is something you can cut.
I'm not cutting it. That looks like a very difficult task.
So it would just protect this from scuffs, from water, from whatever.
Yeah, but then it's going to make it look cheap.
Maybe we do.
Whatever we put on there because we.
Yeah.
So nice have, to have, be presentable. I think we should probably get some, some coasters if it's the drinks, that's the problem.
As long as people use them, you know.
What if we do a, a?
We sent out an email, hey, if you're going to have, it's okay to have dri- drinks in here, but if you're going to do that, use a coaster. We could buy a, a set of coasters for ten bucks.
What if we do, what if we do two policies? One is no food or drinks over here and a halftime break so you can get a drink on it, something.
Well, I don't know, but, I mean, we all got drinks.
I know.
Every one of us is violating that, all righty.
Can we get coasters with the town seal? That would look kind of cool.
I can do that. You can do anything with money.
All right. So you want to just go with coasters?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just get some coasters and a memo, send out saying, hey.
All right.
Put, put your drinks on the, the coaster.
Yeah.
Now, for the, for the drawers, we've got to be careful how we do them because remember this is for handicap.
Right.
And it needs to stay handicapped, so whatever, whatever they go.
Anything you do under here is going to take away that.
Yeah, but we can leave, we can leave the corners. The, the issue of the drawers was looking for a solution if somebody does this. Literally if I put my weight on it, this comes up.
No, we fixed that.
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah, there's crap.
Yeah.
It's anchored to the ground.
Yeah, Mike did that.
But that, that's where the drawers come in place, you know, thinking about they can provide some support when that happens.
As I say, if you're looking for pens or something like that, we could just get a couple of those.
Yeah.
Things from Staples for pens.
Well, I mean, all this crap, like the bylaws and, you know, all this stuff. It's just like, it's all sitting out. The other desks, we had like six drawers and a center drawer. You could put all kinds of stuff in there, so.
See, the problem with that, then people start leaving all their own junk in there.
You mean like my cough drops?
Yes.
Those are valuable in the winter.
When it's meant for the town and all the departments, it's not meant for somebody's personal drawer to be here. And I think if we add personal drawers there, that's what people are going to be using them for. And they'll just become cluttered. You could probably just do the same thing if you have, need town bylaws or, well, and that's, if you put anything over on that end, then it eliminates Jim. Same thing with Griffin.
Yeah, and takes away the handicap.
Or some of the boards with five people, it's going to take away that.
Yeah.
And it just makes it too personable for people to put their, all their own junk in there and leave stuff in there like cough drops.
So let's see how it goes. Maybe we can survive without.
I think if we, you want pen stuff, just put a couple of pen things in there and put some nice town pens in there. And that's it.
All right.
Because drawer, how much for drawers?
Seven hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Yeah.
Seven hundred and eighty-one drawers for a couple of drawers that are going to make us non-compliant with ADA.
Yeah.
How about a, you know, something that needs the power for the, for the computer?
So Travis is working on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's going to have a box in the center. It's going to have power, network, ethernet, HDMI and USB for the owl.
Nice.
So basically, instead of having these cords like running
Yeah.
to the wall, well, the, those might sit there.
The way you have your cord over there too.
Yeah, yeah.
Because in case of an emergency, we'll have to leave here quickly. That might be a hassle.
True, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to be just plugging in up here and keep it off of there, especially if we have somebody with a wheelchair. We could kind of, kind of get them off the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, and we avoid all this too.
And that, that's something else we should look at is how we can run that underneath there for the, the mics. And that, that's something else we should look at, is how we can run that underneath there for the, the mics.
Yeah.
To keep it off the floor, or do something that anchors to the floor better.
Yeah, yeah, this just floats around.
Safety, number, number one.
Absolutely.
Okay, alright.
So.
I think we should look at o- other options for this.
Okay, that sounds good. Alright. We are at warrants and bills.
Oh my god.
With our new.
New format here.
Tables.
They're so big. Okay, I'll make a motion for the following warrants, payroll number thirty-three for one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Accounts payable, number fifty-two dash twenty-five for eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. Accounts payable, number fifty-three, twenty-five, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. Accounts payable, number fifty-four. Um, dash twenty-five for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two, seventy-three. And accounts payable, number one, dash twenty-six for a hundred, eh, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, eleven dollars and seventy-six cents. Accounts payable, zero-one, dash twenty-six, or is that zero-one A?
A.
Dash twenty-six. For seven hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. And accounts payable, zero-two, dash twenty-six for seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. Motion carries.
To the next one, who's Tom Barubi? And why are we giving him six thousand dollars?
That is for emergency management, uh, uh, that is for the Levy Safety Committee. And that is, um, for, uh, salt bags. For bags, for, uh, sandbags, sandbags.
If, if that's the name of the company, it's, it's, it's Tom Barubi's lies and everything, it's, it's the name, it's not an actual, it's a person, but that's the name of the company. And that's where Jim gets a lot of the emergency management stuff from.
Okay.
So these are salt bags?
Uh, sandbag.
Sandbags.
Sandbags, yeah.
I'm like, why are we using salt bags for Levy?
Sandbags.
Sandbags. Okay. Alright, yeah, we knew we had to order those to maintain complacency with the Corps of Engineers. Okay, I'm ready.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. Um, Tom Barubi for six thousand dollars, WB Mason for eighty-nine dollars, forty-nine cents. Modern Pest for one hundred and seventeen dollars. Northern Tree Service for eight thousand four hundred dollars. KP Law for four thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Verizon for twenty-four dollars and sixty cents. Capola and Capola for two thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Turley Publications for seventy-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Merrick Law for one thousand, twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. American Tower Corp for two thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Verizon Wireless for one thousand, sixty-seven dollars, fifty cents. Weston and Sampson Engineers for ten thousand dollars. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. And Civic Plus for three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-one cents.
And I'll just note, those are FY twenty-five bills. So is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
And I'll make a motion to pay the FY twenty-six bills. NTR Technologies for seventy-five dollars, EZ True Value for fourteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Maya for a hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Hamden Communications Corp for one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Comcast for five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. Alright, if I could have a motion on minutes?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the following minutes for June fifth, two thousand twenty-five and June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
You were here both those days, right?
Um, I wasn't on the second one, so I'm, I'm holding the X.
Where's the?
Okay, so I gotta redo them.
Oh, yeah, okay. So do your June fifth one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
I'll make a motion to.
Carries.
Approve the June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five minutes.
Second, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. Motion carries. Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So this week I'd like to, um, talk a little bit about some of the projects. That are wrapping up in, um, some of this ongoing projects that are currently underway in town. Um, I'm not sure if the board.
Hold on, stop. I was absent June fifth.
What?
I know, I'm surprised.
Oh, you were.
So you gotta redo the June fifth one.
Alright, so what, you wanna rescind your motion?
I rescind my motion for June fifth's motion, um, minutes.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, Griffin. All good.
So I make a motion to approve, uh, the meeting minutes for June fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second, all in favor?
Derek Bailey's aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. Motion carries. I had perfect attendance.
You get your gold card, sorry, end of year.
Thank you.
No, you just missed one, we did it together. We were alone once.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you did miss one.
Not on those days.
Not on those two ones, but you did miss, you're gonna get a.
We're not talking about that.
You get a bronze stock.
Alright, sorry, Jim.
No problem. So I just wanted to bring to the board's attention and to the public's attention a couple of things that have been happening in and around town. Um, one, um, for the last, I would say, month or so, um, there, there's been an onslaught of Verizon trucks in town.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if everybody has picked up on that, but that, those Verizon trucks are related to. The board's support of a FIOs grant that was awarded to Verizon Wireless from the state. To install FIOs to every household in, in Warren, in West Warren. So the trucks have been out and about, they've been doing the install, it's gonna take some time to do the, uh, complete install of FIOs. But, um, that's important, uh, to recognize because, you know, there's probably a half a dozen trucks in town, okay? I see the trucks every morning at Dippin' Donuts. They're getting their coffees, they're getting their donuts, they're getting their breakfasts. In the afternoon, they're going to all town to either gas up their truck or to, uh, get a snack or, or to do something. And I've seen some of the guys at Mason's.
Oh, good.
So, um, you know, those things have, um, big impacts in terms of, um, you know, the FIOs. That is coming to every resident as an option, but also has some spin-off on economic development inadvertently.
Yeah.
By having workers here, staff here, and also details.
Yeah, I was just gonna, police detail, right?
Details. So, these are things that, you know, with the, the board's support that you guys supported, that we were so fortunate enough to get this grant from the state. It's happening and, and, and it, and it's, and it's ongoing. So, uh, I just wanted the, the residents and the board to, to be aware of that. Um, this week, uh, has been a very busy week, um, uh, I'd like to, uh, also publicly welcome, uh, Griffin Harrington. Our new administrative assistant to, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. Griffin, thank you for joining us. Uh, in, in being part of the team here. Uh, we really look forward to working with you and, uh, we've already hit the ground running on, on a lot of different. Uh, uh, projects and initiatives and, and different things, and so thank you, um, and, and please, to the public. Stop in and say hello to Griffin, um, when you're, when you're by. Um, I, I also wanna report to the board, um, that I attended, uh, the first administrative. Uh, uh, meeting for the Rutland, uh, for the new Central Mass, uh, uh, dispatch. Which was, uh, this Tuesday, uh, it was held in Rutland. Uh, we talked about, um, ongoing, um. Um, initiatives where, um, you know, it looks like, um, the town of Spencer is close to joining.
Oh, good.
Um, the, uh, the town of, uh, Southbridge, uh, and Stirbridge are, 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 are talking about it. Charlton is also talking about it, but Spencer i- is right there, is my understanding. They either have signed or is going to be signing an MOA, um, and so, um, you know, we're trying to. Uh, get, uh, other communities in there, um, to ultimately lower the cost of our assessments. That's what our goal is, to provide the continuing good service at a lower price. So, um, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at, at ways to do that. Uh, we had, um, some, um. Vacancies on the board because, uh, there's some interims, um, I don't know if there's an interim in, uh, in Rutland yet. But I think there's an interim in Barry, um, so Rutland and Barry, uh, slots are open, their town administrators are, are vacant right now. Um, so, um, so we're waiting for some, um, for some people to, uh, to join the board there. We're continuing on, uh, Olcam was there, Hubbardston was there, myself, Director Moriarty. Uh, was there as well as, um, uh, the Assistant Director was there, um, and we, we talked about ongoing. Um, expansion, potential sites, um, and looking at some opportunities for the future. So we had our first meeting there. Uh, our Green Communities Grant, uh, we have received our final inspection on Wednesday. Uh, the ninth, I'm, I'm pushing to get this closed out as quickly as possible. Uh, so that we can be eligible to apply for green communities in the fall. Um, I've already, uh, circled around with Superintendent Duff, uh, to see if he's got some, uh, projects for. Uh, Warren Community Elementary that could, you know, benefit from green communities. Um, so he was really excited that, you know, that we were having these initial discussions, so there may be a project that he, he, he has. Over at the Warren Community Elementary that, that could be done. Um, so we're looking at, at, at that, um, but Green Communities was impressed with, um, the work that was done at the Senior Center and here. They have approved the, uh, inspection, the inspection was approved to the standards of, of green communities. So we, we are, we are, we are done with the inspection, now we're waiting on our final reimbursement, uh, for, for, for that money. Um, uh, I will be also, um, I also attended this week, uh, on Tuesday night. Uh, we had, uh, continued mediation, uh, for the school contracts, uh, for the teachers. Uh, uh, that was on Tuesday night, um, and that lasted till about eight o'clock, uh, from five to eight. Uh, over at the, at, at the school. Um, we're still in mediation, we have another, uh, date set for mediation. Um, which is September twenty-fifth, um, is the next mediation date. Um, so there's still proposals going back and forth, um, and hopefully, uh, we can get the, um, contract somewhat resolved soon. Um, Cutter Park, um, redesign, um, uh, group met. Uh, uh, this afternoon in my office, myself, Jeremy Olson, Sue Ramsey, uh, John O'Leary. Uh, we met, uh, as, as, uh, reviewing the, the submitted proposals. We went out for, uh, requests for qualifications for firms that will redo Cutter Park. We had six firms, uh, uh, apply, uh, we finished, um, uh, the scoring. And, and John is tabulating, uh, the scores as we speak. And, um, a, an award is gonna be coming out very soon, uh, with a company. Uh, and so that project will be moving forward, uh, very soon, um, and that's through CDBG Funds. Um, the Senior Center, uh, I've been asked to stop by the Senior Center tomorrow at one, if any member is available. Uh, to stop by, they're, they're gonna be, uh, giving over some, uh, some quilts that were made. Uh, for all the hard work that Sharon and, 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 and staff have done, Paula and Gail. Uh, the Sewing Club has made some quilts and they're gonna have some, uh, presentation, uh, made over with staff. And, and the Sewing Club had reached out to me to ask if I would be able to stop by, I will stop by. I would like to extend that offer to the board as well, uh, if they would like to stop by tomorrow at one. Uh, so those quote, the quilts will be handed over. Also at the Senior Center on the twenty-fourth this month. I, we did send out the email, uh, the, the Warren is gonna be, Warren Senior Center's having a clam bake. Uh, at eleven-thirty on the, the twenty-fourth, um, so i- if you do plan on attending, please let Sharon know. Um, you know, um, that you'd, that you'd like to be attending.
I'm not a big lobster person.
Uh, well, they do have a chicken option.
Yeah.
Um, so.
You live in New England and you don't even like seafood?
No, no, I like seafood.
I'm, I'm on a seafood diet.
Seafood, get it?
So we're in the process of closing out, uh, fiscal year twenty-five, uh, everybody is completely busy. Every department, making sure we get all the bills paid, everything's acc- accounted for. Uh, we've got a finance committee meeting, uh, set for, for Monday, uh, to review the line item transfers that were just, uh, reviewed. Um, you know, in some of the money that was, uh, spent in fiscal year twenty-five that was approved tonight. This Tom Bou- Boudry and this Northern Tree Service were two, uh, things that were identified by the Levy. Uh, Safety Committee as well as the Army Corps of Engineers that needed to be addressed. So this Tom Boudry, uh, Supply Company, we purchased, um, um, you know, um, uh, sandbags. A whole bunch of sandbags, uh, to be, uh, filled, uh, for the Levy. Uh, as well as Northern Tree, we contracted with Northern Tree again to do some more takedown of, of some of that brush. That was identified in the Levy report to be taken down. So the Levy Committee had came to me and, and asked to get these projects moving. So, uh, I worked with Jimmy McKeon, Jimmy McKeon was very helpful, um, and, uh, we, we were able to get those, uh. Those projects, uh, completed under the fiscal twenty-five bills. So now we'll get a new onslaught of funds for fiscal year twenty-six. It's another twenty-five thousand to do other, uh, things in, in the pipeline.
And with that, we might actually have a donation from a sandbagging machine too.
Okay.
Cause somebody made a offer of a sandbagging machine that we could utilize. Instead of trying to create a, a chain of people to fill the sandbags, you just put the sandbags in. And dump sand into the top of it and it would fill them for you.
Yeah, that's excellent.
So. A resident who has made several donations to us in the past for equipment offered that also.
Okay.
So.
I did also let, uh, the Chair know, um, several weeks ago, I, I, I will be, um, out of town on the sixteenth of, of, of July. Returning on the twenty-second. July.
What is it again?
So who's replacing you?
Uh, I'll have my phone there.
So what are the dates again?
The sixteenth of July to the twenty-second.
Town shuts down.
Let's give all your stuff to Griffin.
Yeah.
Right?
I'll, I'll be gone from the fifteenth.
What?
To the twelfth as well. Um, I'm being put on orders, I have to fly an aircraft from Texas back to Massachusetts, so. I will be gone. Got room in the back.
Alright, so, um, for the meeting on the twenty-fourth, can you get us an update on what, where Verizon is and? Um, in the process?
In terms of?
Well, like how, how.
How far in the process they are?
Yeah, how complete are they?
I can try to reach out to them to see if they can give us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
They get a giant spool sitting on Southbridge Road still.
Yeah.
Of the, um, fiber optic line.
Yeah.
So.
They look like they're working. They look like they're working in town, like downtown right now, so do you know if they've been, I mean, like, are they going to your house?
They ain't going to my house.
They said that they would cover every house.
They're not gonna cover my house.
That's what she said on the computer and on the Zoom.
Yeah, I'd be curious.
They'd have to run telephone poles up to my house to be able to get it up to my house, there's no way. They'd have to run it all the way through West Brookfield and up the road again.
Adam, have you, any activity by you or Ray?
I've seen them out in our area, I couldn't confirm exactly what roads they've done, but they've been pretty much all over the place.
Oh, they have, okay.
Several of the firefighters are traffic constables, so they've been out doing the details for them, so. So yeah, they've been quite a bit, and I know there's some underground stuff going on as well, a lot of it, some of it's run underground, so.
I haven't noticed anything yet, but I've noticed them all around.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
They do have a lot of residents asking about it though, about the high-speed internet.
They put a sign out where they're working, I don't know if you've seen it, is FiOS coming soon?
Yeah, yeah. So the other question I have is Dispatch Center, they talked about building a new one, right?
Yeah.
So now they're really gonna do that if they get four towns, right? So-
Warren is centrally located.
Well, that was my pitch, we have this big mill complex, right?
Oh no, I'll definitely be trying to push. They're looking, as opposed to building new, they're looking to redo a building, an existing building.
I mean, maybe that-
The mill?
Building 14.
Yeah.
You'll notice that Westcom, which is a comparable, you know, what they're trying to do, Westcom is for Western Massachusetts. That's their dispatch center, and that's right off of the Mass Pike. That was an old building, I think it was Salter College before that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so, their grand opening, I think Steve Crystal was just telling me, is Monday. So they finished their project, so that's-
So that's a dispatch center.
That's Western Mass's dispatch center. So I think, I think they do Chickopee, Long Meadow, Munson, Palmer may even be part of that. But there's a whole bunch of towns that are, and a couple cities that are in that.
Okay.
Also mention Coy Hill, because the elevation of Coy Hill is very good for signal.
No, we don't want anything on Coy Hill.
No.
No.
Mill.
Coy Hill's a forest.
Oh, but it's just a tower.
Oh, you don't want the radio waves hitting you, right?
No.
Alright. Alright, any other questions for Jim? Alright. Any new business? Any old business?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I would like to say thank you very much to the Parks Department and everybody that participated in the fireworks, because that was an amazing fireworks show. Thank you for, you know, the Fire Department, you know, the Police Department assisting in the display. A lot of people were there, actually a lot of people were commenting, there was a lot more people this year than there were a couple years ago, because we haven't had them for a couple of years. But they did a really good job and very good display, as usual. And then, the Parks Day Camp for the kids is going on at Dean Park right now. And Danielle Fountain, who is there, is doing an amazing job. She's, my kids have been loving it, and all the kids have been praising everything they've been doing, and having a lot of fun. And it's a great opportunity for kids that haven't entered it, see if they can. But it is going on right now, and it's a great option for the kids, do something during the summer.
Cool. Anything else, old business? Alright, correspondence, we have a Mass DOT Bridge Report, which is pretty interesting.
Been looking at that.
Two bridges, one's on Pulaski, one's on South Street, and they go over Wigwam Brook. And I know one of them, we have a grant, right, to fix?
Do we?
I think so, I think the Pulaski Street one.
Pulaski Street one, I thought that the state's gonna do something with that.
Because they're both in really bad condition.
Yeah.
And there's one where the center beam is completely missing. That's the one going over Pulaski and Wigwam.
This one where it's all rusted out?
Yeah, and it says, center beam missing.
Yeah. Yep.
So, yeah.
Definitely in need of repair.
I think we might wanna talk to our local architect slash engineer and see what he thinks about those.
I think they're in pretty bad shape from the report. The way they look, it's terrible. If they can, they propose some solutions.
Well, they just do the inspection.
They're gonna rebuild these. Wow, yeah, this is-
They're real bad.
Well, if it was me, it was like I would just redo the whole thing over.
Yeah, they're gonna do that.
Because they are way past-
Little culvert that we have to do for South Street by the mill complex. Jeremy was saying that's gonna cost us a million dollars.
Yeah, that's why we need a grant.
I mean-
That'll come from the MVP process, and we can get an action grant.
We're gonna have to work on something like that, because these bridges, they're getting real bad.
Yep.
I couldn't find on the report if there was a serious threat of, you know, collapsing and having School Street unpassable.
I think they would've said something like that.
I couldn't find anything, so they're in bad shape, but they're not about to collapse.
Right, yeah, I think we would've gotten a big red flag.
It really, yeah, it really doesn't say. And I've never seen on a report where they said catastrophic failures about to happen, or anything like that. They just say it's really, really bad. That's it.
Yep.
Repair, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of any bridges.
So, I think one of our biggest advantages of the second bridge is that there's more rust holding it together than steel. And we probably shouldn't do anything about the rust.
Yeah, don't go scraping it.
Yeah, don't scrape the rust off, because that's the bridge.
The bricks look pretty bad, too.
Yeah.
Do we have like a plan if, for example, the one on Southridge Road collapses, is there a way to go around or something easy to do from the Highway Department?
No, that goes to school. And-
You'd have to do Reed Street or-
So it would be a complete-
There'd be serious traffic.
A complete shortcut.
That's something you guys might wanna stop looking at as a recommendation. If one of those bridges fail and we have to reroute traffic, how are you gonna reroute traffic through the town? Because, have you guys seen these bridge reports?
I am not seeing them, yeah, no.
Yeah, Griffin can give you a copy or email you a copy.
He can send me a copy, I'm very happy.
Take that one, you can take mine.
Okay, thank you.
Look at those.
Well, I think South Street, you can do some creative rerouting. Pulaski Streets, I don't think there's, it's one way in, one way out, you'd have to go through the mill complex.
Well, that's the thing.
Pulaski, you could probably go through the mill complex there.
That's the only other way in and out.
That's the only other way to get around, yeah. Comes out on the backside.
Come up with an option, see if you can look at the way they can get through if it's the mill complex that they have to use. Because we would have to get an agreement to the mill complex to utilize it for public safety. In an event, so we'd have to sign an agreement. And we don't wanna wait till the last minute to do this, so.
Yeah, that might not be a bad, like, just a, like an emergency easement agreement or something, you know?
They said they would grant us any easement we want. So, we should probably start working on those easements with the mill complex and add this in there as an emergency reroute.
So with the easements, the new study that is coming out for Pulaski Street, Weston and Sampson is gonna be doing those easements, is gonna be working on getting those easements and researching them.
For the Levy?
For, for, for Levy.
For the Levy?
Yeah, yeah. It's all part of that.
Okay.
Because even when this, that particular bridge gets repaired-
You're gonna have to reroute.
Yeah, you have to reroute.
And you're gonna think school traffic too, because school traffic going up that road.
That's a little wider, maybe they could do half and half, but Pulaski is, it's just, it's like a lane and a half sort of, so I don't even know.
Just a heads up, right, it's like a heads up.
And they also notify you guys that these are eligible for Chapter 90 funds. So, the funds that we receive every year, although we don't receive a ton, and these projects are a lot of money, you can use, you know, Chapter 90 funds.
We receive just under a million dollars, and just for that little culvert at the end of South Street, or there on South Street, is gonna be a million dollars. I could only imagine what these are gonna cost.
Just one million dollars, a foot?
I would ask Jeremy to stop looking into some serious options, because we have to do something, we can't wait for them to fail.
Yeah. Alright. Any comments and concerns from the board?
No, sir.
Nothing. Comments and concerns from the public? Joe? Step up.
Joe Conrad, resident. Well, a lot has happened in the last three or four weeks. First of all, I'd like to thank Jim for attending the Molly Bush Memorial. The family there really appreciated you representing the town. Among other things that have happened in the last month, and knowing that there's always copycats. I believe it was in California, there was a brush fire started, and a sniper took out two battalion chiefs before he was taken down. Recently, in Texas, 10 people attempted to ambush a border patrol station. And I would like to recommend to both chiefs, if you're going to go out, be aware of the situation around you. Yes, Warren is a small town, you have a small force, but you only need one nutcase that you don't know about. Recently, with the flood in Texas, I can't imagine a 20-foot-high wall of water. 110 bodies have been found, 170 are still missing. And I was thinking, a 20-foot-high wall of water would flood downtown Warren, Number 4 Village, and half of West Warren. And we don't need people up on the second floor, or sitting on their roof, waiting for a rescue. Fortunately, we have a fire alarm system, and we have a reverse 911. It will work, it has worked in the past. Being aware of potential dangers is something that every person should take with a grain of salt. Things do happen unexpectedly, and if you are aware that anything could possibly happen, be aware of your situation to prevent a tragedy. Thank you.
Just a general comment, if you haven't signed up for reverse 911, please do. Any other comments? Ray?
I have one comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Don't forget about Town Alert, which is the easiest and simple one to send and receive.
Ray Kapacko, resident, I'm often here with some critiques, but tonight I'd like to commend the board for a good discussion, and especially the outcome of the discussion regarding the desk enhancements. So my commendation to the board for their decision on that, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Our next meeting is on Thursday, July 24th, 2020.
Oyster Day?
What?
Oyster Day?
Oyster Day?
Yeah, Clam Day, what is it?
Clam Bake Day.
Yeah.
Seafood Day.
July 24th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Bring your clams. And-
Clam bacon. Maybe we might wanna get a little bin thing for the desk.
Do not put your clams on this.
No clams on the desk.
No. Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a sick?
Alright, all in favor?
David Dupre, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
Richai Hacker, aye, we are adjourned. Goodnight, everyone.